I'm just kidding. I'm just messing around.
Welcome to the Board of Education's November 6, 2023 work session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Bike.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, I want to remind you that you have been invited to the annual Reach Them to Teach Them event on Tuesday, November 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Tennessee Theater. Please let Terry know as soon as possible if you'd like to attend that event. And thank you to everyone who's in attendance tonight. I just want to remind you that this is the board's public business meeting to discuss items that come before us for consideration. We would ask that you be respectful and courteous at all times, and please be mindful that sound carries very easily in this room. So if you need to speak to your neighbor or take a phone call, just step outside of the room to do so. Also, we have appointed board members to the Strategic Planning Committee, so thank you to those who express interest in serving. The committee will be Reverend Butler, Kristy Christie, and myself, and two staff members, Corey Lautner and Steve Rutter. Sorry about that. So I'll work with Terry on kind of coordinating our schedules to get our first meeting planned and also getting agenda before we nominate a chair for that committee. Moving on, are there any requested changes to the meeting agenda? Okay, motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Dr. Reiswick, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For many years, I have made it a point to regularly spend a half-day visiting classrooms. I think I've done that for the last seven years. And it's always great to get out there and kind of see teachers, and the way we talk about it as a team is how do you pulse the system? You know, how do you know the decisions you're making are happening in a school or not happening in a school? So it's always great to have conversations with the folks on the ground who are actually doing it, and they're always pretty honest to tell you, so that's a good thing. So we believe important work happens in the central office, but we also think the classroom is where the core and heart of our mission is. So with that in mind, I was excited this past week to be able to visit Cedar Bluff Pre-K, preschool. So that was a great time. They're really small, but it was a lot of fun to spend the day. I'm a little big, so it was a lot of fun. But I got to spend there with Ms. Samantha Hobbs and Ms. Jo Lynch in their rooms, but April Parton actually took me around to every classroom, got to spend time in there and just hear some of their needs and some of what they do. But I'd say the most powerful thing that I saw that I just wanted to talk about for a minute was a co-taught classroom. And for those who don't know what co-taught is, that's a special ed teacher beside a regular ed teacher and three teaching assistants in that class of 20. And just to be able to see their work, you know, they had eight of the kids of the 20 students in their class that were actually suspected potentially and being evaluated just for their needs that they may potentially have, and some of those more severe than others, but you saw them together in a classroom. And you saw just some miraculous tagouts of teachers when it was the right time to do it. You saw the tagout between the special education certified teacher and the regular ed just in the lesson in and of itself, like didn't miss a beat. I mean, it wasn't a, it was just step up, turn, next person stepped up and said, okay, now, you know, grab a, they were looking at shapes, grab another thing out of this bag and tell us what shape that is. And it's kind of, so it was kind of seamless how that worked. They knew each student's needs, each student's, you know, what their strategies were to work with them. I watched one student who was having some issues in behavior that day turn something over, and then just work with that student through different signals and things that he knew to calm back down and actually within two minutes was picking up and correcting his behaviors that he had done before. So it was just neat to hear from them and their understanding for every student in their regular ed or one suspected for some other supports needed, that they see the vision for them or what they can be one day. One teacher told me a story about her individual personal child that was a lot like some of those students who is now a sophomore at UT, and just to see that. So, you know, sometimes I think every story matters in being able to be in the schools and see that happen, but see that happen in our pre-K that this board has made such a priority. I have great hope for what we're going to be able to do with that. So just wanted to share that story. At this time, I'm going to turn over to Assistant Superintendent Jason Myers of Student Success to give us an update. It's been a few months since we've heard about progress in the Student Success deep dive.
Thank you, Dr. Reiswick. I thought I had more time to prepare. That was a quick superintendent's update. So I know it's been a few months since I last addressed the board on special education, so I'm happy to share an update on the progress our department has made on our project. To support the project, I've launched internal working groups comprised of KCS staff. These groups are focused on developing guidance on practices to promote a culture of collaboration and ensure decisions are made by those closest to our students. We recognize also that meaningful change cannot happen in a vacuum, nor can we go at this alone. Real cultural change takes time and willingness to build a coalition around the project. Tonight, I'm also announcing two tangible steps we have taken to follow through on the commitment that I made to our board and our community. First, we are launching a standing Special Education Council to provide input and perspective to our work. To honor the work of our task force, each member has been invited to be part of that council. In addition to those members, we will also have representation from Gen Ed teachers, special education teachers, as well as school and district leadership. We have also launched the Student Success Leadership Council. This council will be comprised of school principals and will give input and perspective to the project through the lens of our school leaders. These groups will not operate in silos and will play a vital role in our work as we move forward. Each council will serve as a sounding board for ideas that emerge from the internal working groups and provide us with actionable feedback toward progress. It is our hope that each of these councils will have their first meeting the first week of December. Over the next two months, I plan to share additional updates with the board and the community. In December, I will provide the board with an update on our ESS contract, which has been a great asset to our department. It has allowed us to fill vacancies with a high level of efficiency. Also, I plan to introduce our candidate for the Student Success Advisory and Improvement Officer position. And then finally, I will update the board on our Educator Input Portal, which is designed to gather additional feedback from teachers, service providers, and our school and district leadership. Finally, in January, I will announce the foundational elements of the KCS Way for Special Education and outline our long-term plan for cultural change. As we continue this process, it's important to recognize that there are no quick fixes for this project. To truly change organizational culture takes time and hard work. We will stay the course, cast our vision, and build our coalition to support this important work. Dr. Reiswick, that concludes my update.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Just want to say I've been able to sit at the table with Mr. Myers, as he's really processed a lot of that information that's come in, and I appreciate his approach. He actually came to me saying, you know, we don't want to just do the minimum we need to so people feel like we're moving forward, we're willing to go down to the core and get this done. And I think the steps that he's talking about are ones that are going to make that happen. So we look forward to that work because it's going to help us serve kids better, and we appreciate that. Final two things I'll say, Madam Chair, is as we move into the holidays, that November is a month of thanks, and I don't know that we'll gather again and me have a chance to say this, but I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you first to you all as a board. You guys have been very supportive of the work that we're trying to do for students and staff, and I hear it. I hear that when I'm out at schools, too. So thank you for that. You guys take it very seriously and want what's best for both, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank our staff and our students, just all staff that are there, because they all matter to our students and it makes a difference, just for supporting where we're headed as a district, and families as well for the work that they do. So no matter what you are, principal, custodian, or any one of those other, please, if you are hearing this, consider writing a note to those folks who make a difference to your students every day, or stop them in a car line and just take a second to thank them because it is, as I said earlier, difficult work, but it's also very rewarding work, and appreciate that. And then my final tonight is very excited tomorrow to visit Hardin Valley Academy for our honoring service event to recognize veterans and members of our Guard Reserves. I'll say this, as a son of a veteran who was in the Army for 21 years, the military and serving the country has always meant a lot to me, grew up in that situation, and I think it's incredible. So this is an exciting event that we have. So this event is a chance for us to celebrate and our recent recognition on the security of defense with the Employer Freedom Award. That will be there on display for folks to be able to see. But also, more importantly, we've invited employees who are Guard and Reserve employees as well as veterans to be honored who also serve on the KCS staff. These employees have demonstrated a deep commitment to service, both in the military and with us at KCS, and we're determined to make them know that their sacrifice is recognized. Looking forward to seeing you all tomorrow who could be there. It's going to be a wonderful event, and we're excited about it. With that, Madam Chair, conclude my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Reiswick. I'm looking forward to tomorrow, too. I think it's going to be a great day of thanks for our staff, for their service. Dr. Adams, do you have a custodial staffing update?
Madam Chair, members of the board. So currently, out of our 398 positions, we have 81 vacancies, leaving us with 317 field positions. Nine of our schools are at 50% or greater, but we also have 47 facilities that are fully staffed.
Awesome. I had a couple of questions, if that was okay.
Certainly.
When custodians apply for jobs, do they have to pay to apply for those jobs?
They do not have to pay to apply, of course. And I'll let, I see Jennifer reaching for her. I'll let her get into the HR questions, but they do not have to pay to apply.
Okay. I was curious, like, when they take drug tests, do they pay for that aspect of it? Or?
Madam Chair, there, like Dr. Adams said, there's no cost to apply, but if a candidate is, a custodial candidate or otherwise, is recommended for a position, there are some costs with those pre-employment screens.
Okay. I was thinking, and this is just an idea for recruitment retention, is, and the reason that I brought up drug tests specifically is maybe if it comes back as a negative drug test, I was thinking maybe KCS could eat that cost for those employees in a way to help retain those. And then I just was also curious, for the custodians who do end up quitting, do they ever, is there exit interviews? Do they give reasons to why they end up leaving the district?
Sure. So there are exit interviews sent to every employee that submits a resignation, and then obviously the HR and talent teams would review those responses. There are not a lot of custodial staff that have submitted exit interviews to review them.
Okay. And just one more question, sorry. So the job listings for custodians. So I know that a lot of job listings are done by individual locations. Is that the case for custodians also?
Madam Chair, it is not. So custodians, we operate through a pool posting, which we do for a couple of other job categories as well. And we have done custodial postings both ways in the past, so by specific school location and by pool posting. And while, when you go to the website and see our vacancies, it looks like there's one custodial position because there's one posting. We have seen more success that way, though, because it allows all candidates to be housed in one specific posting, and it allows a discussion between the Custodial Operations Department and the candidates as to a best fit, so they're not searching for one specific location on the website and may not be aware of different locations within the district. So it allows for that dialogue on options for specific openings.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks for all your work on that. Mr. Triplett, do you have a legislative update?
I do. Lots of updates, right? Good times for updates, I guess. Couple things. Our TSBA Leadership and Convention is on the 16th through the 19th, and so there are a number of resolutions up for consideration. There are 11 of them, and I'm just going to briefly kind of summarize them. The TSBA Board of Directors has given a, they have a recommendation for each one. They recommend we either approve it or they oppose it. So I'm just going to kind of summarize them, and they're all available in the packet in front of you to read in detail. But the first one is appreciation for the TSBA president. The second one is clarification of qualifications for the Director of Schools. The third one is supporting special school districts. The fourth one is a modification of the letter grading system of public schools. The fifth one opposes partisan election of school board members. And the sixth one is funding for special education preschool students in the TISA formula. And the Board of Directors recommends that they approve all of those. They recommend all of those be adopted. Number seven is a resolution supporting granting of temporary permits for teachers of courses for which an end-of-course examination is required, and the Board of Directors takes no position on that one, which I thought was interesting. Number eight is one that is familiar to us. It's to allow school districts to make retention decisions for third and fourth grade, and that is something that the TSBA Board of Directors recommends be adopted. Number nine is a resolution requiring dual administration of the English Language Arch portion of the Tennessee Ready Test for third-grade students, and the Board of Directors opposes that resolution. Number 10 is a constitutional amendment. You'll have to take time to read through that, but they recommend that be adopted. And then number 11 is a resolution to include individual threats of acts of violence on school grounds or that school-related activity be considered a violation of the zero tolerance offense, and the Board of Directors opposes that one. So again, those are the resolutions that will be up for discussion at that meeting. Obviously, all that information is there. You'll have, you can look through that and figure out kind of where you stand on it, what you support, what you oppose, but at least that gives you an idea at least where they stand on those issues. So that includes my update.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Triplett. Okay. Well, we will move on to the regular session agenda. Okay. We'll start with items and contracts. C, one or two? Any questions, discussion? Three or four? Oh, Mr. Depler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had discussed this with Ms. Horn just briefly before the meeting, and we are waiting on a revised version of this, so I don't know if the one that's on there was marked up by me. Okay. Yeah, so we are waiting on a clean copy of that. That's number three with the East Tennessee Natural Gas. So I thought we'd already had it last week, but apparently it did not come in, correct? Okay. So just to let everybody know. Hopefully, we'll get it before Thursday.
Number five? Six or seven? Oh, okay. Ms. Ewen?
Sorry, I had a question on number five.
Sorry about that.
How do we currently track dual enrollment?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Horn. In a variety of ways, I think a lot of it is back to just our standard system of Aspen. This agreement with overgrad is really about looking at the data that we have around students and student subgroups that are participating and have access to dual enrollment, and through that data agreement, they will do some coaching and things to help us look at opportunities for expanding access to additional dual enrollment opportunities.
Will it be able to show us that information by institution?
It should be able to, I would think. That would be one of the goals, is to see again which, not only who's accessing it, but also those different quality levels, I guess, as you would look at that, more technical versus more traditional academic-type courses and things.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I was still taking notes on the TSBA stuff and missed item one.
Oh, no, sorry about that.
No, you were just, you were popping. I like it. The, on item one, does that single page constitute the whole report? Because it's not much of a report. I thought for sure there's got to be more pages to this compliance report. Is that it? Okay, there we go. Thank you.
That's all there is? Yeah. Dr. Reiswick.
No, thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Watson. Yeah, it's more of a formality that we do every year that looks at that, and Andrews run down and checked with all the departments to make sure they're compliant with the things that they are. This is just the form that we send back to the state saying it's a...
I'm sure if there was a corrective action that needed to take place, there would be more documentation, but since there is none, then it's a single page or a clean sweep.
I want to think back, because I used to do some of this when I was in my other role, but like, there was one time that I think we hadn't updated a policy yet, because it was like in first or second reading, and Terry probably remembers that, too. So we had to report that, you know, we haven't updated this certain policy yet, because it was, it's like, usually we kind of tell on ourselves if there's something that's not caught up and report that on the front side, but in this, we're not aware of any of these.
Yeah, so because it's a single page, in our view, we're in full compliance. Yeah, thank you.
That makes sense. Ms. Ewen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Reiswick, when you said that, that made me think of the threat assessment policy. So wouldn't that be one that is in reading right now?
And I know you've made some changes to that as well, right? Some small changes. Do you want to speak to that now?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, I took a look at that today. Ms. Ewen actually reached out to me and, you know, expressed that she thought it was a typo, and it basically, what, you know, is a typo. There was some language that's supposed to be pulled from the statute itself, so I've corrected that, and I mean, it does look like it's from the statute. And I would say, I don't know exactly when the compliance report is due, but the 30th? So technically, the board could be in compliance by the time it's sent out, depending on how the vote goes for that threat assessment policy.
Thank you. Mr. Triplett?
We would need to prove that in a first reading, then, correct?
Okay. Thank you. Item six? Seven or eight? Nine or 10? 11 or 12? 13 or 14? Item 15? 16 or 17? 18 or 19? 20? Okay. Moving on to board policies. 6A or B? C or D? E or F? Policy G? H or I? Yes, Ms. Bike.
I know in policy review regarding H, I think Mr. Watson had recommended a change, and I was wondering if we are going to also change the title of that or no? Okay, okay. I just wanted to, okay, but once it, then it will be, okay. No, I'm good.
Okay, on to I or J? K? Or L? M or N? We're going through the whole alphabet. O, O or P? Q, R, or S? And these were discussed in policy review, so there was discussion, robust discussion on all of these policies a few weeks ago. Okay, moving on to grants. A or B? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On A... On A, is there any substantive change from what we had originally planned for that submission? And just for the public, we're talking about the SER 3.0 grant application.
Yep, Dr. Iswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Watson, I'll let Ms. Himwargar go, she'll give you much more detail, but I want to give you guys kind of, I think I might, we might put this in the update too, but just say it for the record. So part of this is we're in our third year of the SER spend, and, you know, the three years out, you kind of, there's some money kind of gets bucketed without clear direction of what we're going to do, maybe, you know, $3 million for literacy, right, like those kinds of things that we look at, and what we've really worked with, and Ms. Himwargar, I'm probably stealing all the words you're getting ready to say, but what we've asked them to do, of course, through this summer, was work with the finance team and kind of look at where do we have some margins, and how can we pull those dollars and move them into like capital, so we can start spending that before, so we make sure we spend the dollars down. So I just want to say, overall, that's kind of the theory behind it, but I know Ms. Himwargar can answer questions specifically too.
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, yes, you did steal most of my words. So there were personnel, places where personnel was allocated dollars in SER, where the personnel vacant, where there were personnel vacancies, there was additional spending, where the state or federal dollars, I guess, an opportunity for funds came available where we weren't anticipating when we budgeted, so the Grow Your Own Initiative, we had, we had budgeted some money in the SER budget towards similar initiatives, that there was then a different avenue to pay. So those dollars were redirected towards capital projects and technology.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So because this is such a multi, I mean, it's been multiple years, and a lot of people are aware of the initial money that we got, I just wanted to make it clear that we're not, in this grant application, we're not greatly veering from our original strategy. There might be some nuance and some detail, but we're still trying to accomplish basically the same things, correct?
Correct. We're still trying to accomplish the same thing, still have the same priority, did not end up spending all the money that we allocated towards some of those, or redirecting some of those funds. And it's, I think where, there was a question last time too, this isn't for additional funds, this is just a reallocation of the funds that we were awarded in SER 3.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on to B or C. D or E. On to contracts. A or B. Those are the only contracts. All right, on to nine, regular agenda items. And Board members, you did receive an email earlier today with the finalized charter school agreement that's being considered for this item, so is there any discussion on item 9A? Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a required timeline for having this agreement passed?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Owen. I think I'm going to, I'll probably talk to Dr. Wilson, I pass it to Dr. Wilson, he'll probably have Ms. Nixon speak, I'm assuming.
And that's actually exactly what I'm going to do, so, Ms. Nixon wouldn't mind coming in, there are some time-sensitive elements, but have her go ahead, yeah.
Hello, Teresa, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Iswick and members of the board. We do have some timelines that we do have to follow according to our authorizing standards. It is not a law, it is just high-quality authorizing standards that it should be completed after the application 60 days, which would be October 27th.
All right, so with that in mind, we, we didn't get any of this documentation until this afternoon. It doesn't seem like there's time for us to do our due diligence, to have a discussion about this agreement, and there's certainly not time for the public to be aware of this agreement. I've really only had time to look at a couple of pages, and I have quite a lot of questions. Looking at the whereas section, the fourth whereas paragraph talks about meeting the best interests of the students, the district, or the community. That language seems problematic to me, because it implies that we are interested in meeting someone's interests besides those of the students. And Mr. Dupler, if you could look at the last paragraph on the first page, where it says the charter school has the power to contract, buy or lease property, and the power to borrow funds. If a charter were to borrow funds and then to default on that borrowing, do we become liable for those funds?
Yes, Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Owen. I would say only if the district is a co-signer.
When they buy or lease property, do they have to follow the county purchasing, do they have to go through county purchasing, do they have to follow the same regulations as we would?
No, it's, no, it's my understanding that due to their status as a separate entity, they would not have to, and of course, this board, through the charter, is bound to the county purchasing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they could, they could purchase a large piece of property that we might end up stuck with? Or a building that we might end up stuck with?
I don't know that, I, I don't understand your question, sorry.
So they could, they could, they could make a purchase without following procurement guidelines, right? And then, let's say they left, for whatever reason, we would then be stuck with whatever property that was, having to dispose of it.
No, I mean, that would, that would still be their responsibility to, to, you know, if they defaulted, or, you know, whatever happened would be their responsibility.
Okay, thank you. So I have another question. On page two, it talks about the promises contained herein. Would that include language in the whereas section? Because there are several places where it talks about ensuring different things in that whereas section, and I wonder if each of those would be part of the, part of the language that is considered a promise.
A whereas is simply a statement, so although it's something that, you know, a court could look to, to try and ascertain intent, it is not something that, that one can point to, to say you have to follow this, like you do in the enumerated terms, number one and follow.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm not sure who the next question would be too. Looking at section 1.1, talking about waivers, we know that charter schools can request multiple kinds of waivers. Has this charter given any indication of waivers that they intend to request? Does anyone know of any?
Thank you, Ms. Henderson, Ms. Owen, okay, Ms. Nixon would probably know that, because she's the one who interfaces, and I know, I know Mr. Dupler, and you guys met and talked with their attorneys working on this contract recently, so I don't know if either you or Ms. Nixon has any knowledge of that.
Okay. Ms. Nixon, she's indicating no, I mean, I can, I can certainly tell you, in our recent encounters with the, with their attorney and Brad Scott, who was their point person, waivers were not discussed. We were, but frankly, we were focused on trying to finalize the terms for the, for the contract.
Thank you. Looking at 1.1, the last paragraph in 1.1, says by signing this agreement, the chartering authority approves any waivers requested in the sponsor's application. That seems like, that seems like really problematic language, to say that we are going to approve waivers before they are requested. Is that required in the law, that we would necessarily approve their waivers?
So it's my understanding that they've already submitted their application, so, I mean, we already have that.
I think this is speaking specifically to waiver applications, because they would make application to the state to waive different requirements, and this seems to be saying that we would approve those requested waivers, when they apply for those waivers.
What this is saying is that if they had waivers in their, in their initial application, then, then this board would be approving those, if you sign them.
So this has nothing to do with any future waivers they would request?
No, no, it says, it says others subsequently requested are attached, so I mean, if they had any others, they would have to be attached.
Okay, thank you.
Reverend Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my question, in terms of understanding, although it's not required by law, it is a best practice to do it in 60 days, and we haven't done it in 60 days. So can we do this at the next meeting in December, give us an opportunity to take a look at this application? And the reason why I ask that question is because I think from the perspective that I'm seeing it, we're not just agreeing to a contract this year, but what we agree to is going to carry on to subsequent years. And so to do this with just a few days to look at this is, I think is, may not be due process, giving it a full review, as well as having the community a chance to look at it. And so that was my question. Could we do this at the next board meeting?
Yeah, Ms. Nixon.
Thank you for the question, Reverend Butler. It can be done. The thing is, we as a board, a charter authorizing authority, have already approved the application. So essentially, the agreement is just the next step. This agreement is in line with the current Emerald agreement, I also, plus any amendments that have occurred. I also went back and met with, because it had been nine years, with all of the groups, the different departments within the district, to ensure that their portion sounded correct, because Emerald's agreement will be up for renewal in the next year. And so I said, let's invest the time now to get the best agreement for Knox County schools. And so we feel like we're in a really good place with it. We have had a few months of meetings to try to work this out legally, to ensure that everything was updated, all the laws were updated, et cetera. And so the only purpose of delaying it would just be delaying it, I mean, the goal is to get it approved, since we've already approved the application.
Thank you for your response. I think that the advantage for me would be, and I'm sure that those who've worked on it legally, and also within the statute, know more about it than I do, but still, I'm being asked to approve it. And so I want to make sure what I approve is what I understand is going to happen. And quite honestly, I think, I had some real problem with the application that never was resolved, and I want to make sure that the contract or the agreement we have is going to ensure that whatever those issues were, that we're going to have something in place to make sure that they're not a problem for us, particularly the information that we received from the previous efforts of this, of the applicant, was inconsistent, the data was inconsistent with the state data, and we never did see any way that that was resolved. There was, there was no justification made, that the state made to say, hey, we, they're right and we're wrong, or this is how it's being done, instead of the way they explained. It was just, we voted on it without having that resolved. So when we look at an agreement, we're saying, you're going to operate in accordance with the application, but the application itself was flawed. So how do we know that going forward, we're going to get accurate data, because the data that you, the application was not accurate per what the state was reporting? And I asked the question of our superintendent, and I said, okay, if we have, if we have a data that is not consistent with what the state has, do we do something to make sure that our data matched theirs, or that their data matched ours? And his response was, yes, we do something. We don't just report it our way and say the state's where it's wrong, and that's what happened with the application. I think the minutes will reflect that. So with this agreement, we're being asked to agree to the application, and I just want to make sure, as I read it, and I haven't had a chance to look at it, haven't had a chance to read it, because we got it today. So I could possibly look at it between now and Thursday, but I don't think that I should have to. We had 60 days, I haven't had 60 days, I haven't had six days. So I think that it would be good if we had an opportunity, now, other board members may disagree with me, and I respect that, but I just believe, if you're going to ask me to approve this, I need to have an opportunity to review it, and take a look at what you've done, all the work you've put in it, but take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Butler. Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to be sure the board notices that in 1.2, it says that we are being asked to approve an agreement that goes through June 30th, 2035. We're not talking about a short-term agreement, we're not talking about something small, and the fact that we've approved anything prior to this is irrelevant, and that the staff has had months of meetings is irrelevant, because this board has the responsibility of doing the due diligence, of knowing what's in this before we approve it. And we haven't had time to do that, because we weren't given the information in any kind of appropriate timeline. We've been talking about that for months, we keep coming back over and over and over to things that either are not on the agenda in time, or that we don't have time to look at, and here we are with the exact same thing, something we got just literally hours ago, and we're being expected to approve it through 2035. That doesn't seem reasonable to me at all. Thank you.
Ms. Bike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Reverend Butler and Jennifer Owen, you know, getting this just a few hours ago, and this one is 16 pages long, and again, like others said, this is for 10 years. It makes me really nervous to vote on something that I haven't gotten the chance to thoroughly read, I've barely been able to skim this. I really would like the time to be able to thoroughly read through it, so that I can feel confident in voting on it. I think that that would be really important. I'm curious what took it so long to get to us, and why we didn't have it when the agenda was published.
I am, thank you, Ms. Bike. I'm happy to walk you through a brief timeline of, I actually wrote it out, so I would be prepared with dates and everything. So my first day in this role was July 10th, so obviously, you all had approved the application back in April. My predecessor had gotten an agreement ready to go, and there were some questions, because it had been nine years, of like, who actually should own this? Should this be written by Knox County Schools, the authorizing body, or should it be written by the charter school, like some of our MOUs, and be brought to us? And so that was one of the first things I had to do some investigation on, because this was all new for me as well. And by, in July, after one of our first meetings with the State Board of Education, I asked that question, and they said, oh, certainly, as the authorizing district, you want to own that. And they said, imagine Memphis Shelby with 53 charter schools, the school district wants to have the same language with all 53, and not 53 different ones. And I said, that completely makes sense, thank you for clarifying, now I've learned something new for today. And so then, I'll be honest, it was the summer, people are on vacation, trying to coordinate, and so then on August 7th, Gary and I met, and we went through what are the next steps, and as I took the agreement that had been drafted at that point, we noticed that some of the amendments that had occurred on the original Emerald one had not been updated in that version. So I said, if we're really working hard on this one, to make sure that I'm spending all the hours in Gary's office now, when we do this again, potentially for Emerald in a year when the renewal comes up, like, let's invest the time now. So I took the time to go back around and meet with ELL Transportation, all the departments basically then, and then on September 5th, we sent, so that was about a month that it took to catch up with everybody. September 5th, we sent, emailed the first version. September 5th, we sent, emailed the first version to Knoxville Prep and sent it to them. Their lawyers sent back to us, their legal representation sent us edits on September 19th. Gary and I met on the 20th, actually, the day before you all went to board prep, or had your board retreat. It was that time period. We have been conversing back and forth, and finally, we just got to the point that we said, let's sit down in a room and try to figure out where everybody stands because of the fact that sometimes you can't understand the context via email. And between fall break, summer, vacations, et cetera, I will own part of it as the transitioning in new. You know, that was all new for me. Gary and I, and Keith were there to be able to sit down with them last Friday at 2:00 to actually finalize the parts that we needed to.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Absolutely.
It definitely helps. But I think, I believe, some of our conversations, which I wasn't there for, but I did watch in the summer, was about kind of like having time to look at things and when it happens that something gets to us last minute and things like that, with the idea of having our voting meeting not take, you know, hours long, that I think this is one of those examples that we're probably going to have more questions and more conversation on Thursday. So I'm curious, like, if that's a consideration of having that meaningful conversation on Thursday and potentially not exactly being prepared for it or pushing it off for a month. I would love to have more time than just Thursday to look at this, but that's, thank you.
Did you have, Mr. Doppler, did you want to jump in there?
Well, I mean, Teresa's done, done, done a great job. She's, she's taken notes and got the whole timeline, so I mean, she's got it down. But, but I would add that, that, you know, once we got in a room on, and it, and it just with the scheduling and everything else, it took until last Friday to do that, we were able to finalize the agreement. And, and Knox Prep asked to put this on the board's agenda. And frankly, I mean, all three of us, and Keith Wilson was there too, said, well, you know, the board may question that, but you know, and they said, okay, fine, you know, go ahead and put it on. And so we're willing to do whatever the board's will is. So that's the bottom line.
Thanks, Mr. Doppler. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not to nuance this to death, but I just do, I do have a technical question. And I understand that there's been a tremendous amount of work to get to this point. The current document we have says updated on 11/2, which was Thursday this past week.
It should read 11/3.
Okay, that was my question, because you all mentioned still changing some things on 11/3, but it says 11/2. And if it, and if it was 11/3, and again, I'm just asking from a technical standpoint, like, I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm overly concerned about it, is there a reason why we didn't get it on Friday? If it was done on Friday?
I can answer that. So, so it was, it was late by the time, late on Friday, by the time we got it, you know, finalized, and Teresa and I both were going over it, making sure that, that, that all the, because what happened on Friday was, was, was about eight, you know, other edits, and we had done, you know, probably 20 or so, you know, total. So we were making sure that all the edits were taken care of and everything else. It was after hours, so we weren't going to ask Ms. Cotney to send it out after hours, so. And then we went over it again this morning. So that was just to make sure that we had the right one.
Yeah. Yeah. I do think it would be good to change it to where it says updated 11/3, if that truly is when it was last updated. I think that would be good. And I, I mean, to me, I like to have more time with things. I know I haven't been had a chance to read it all. I do think this is an important thing for the district, and it, I don't think any of us want to be in a position where we're feeling, we know that you're not asking us to do this, but, but we don't want to feel like, nor do we want the public to feel like we're being asked to just approve things, to, just to approve them. And, and certainly having more time would help, and you all already acknowledged that when you said, they, they're probably going to say, why didn't we get more time, right? But I, I do think that would be good in the future. Thanks.
Mr. Triplet.
Yeah, quick question. Do they, is there a reason, if we delay this another 30 days, does that put them behind on some things? Does that create a situation where they're, they're late on their processes and what they want to do moving forward?
The only thing that it does not allow is really for me to begin my oversight with them and their work. Because we do not have an agreement, I don't feel I have the responsibility or the authority to kind of step in on your behalf, to speak into any processes they have in place. And so when we start looking at the pre-opening checklist, I mean, they are already working through, you know, securing a location and starting to find students and those types of things, some of their recruitment and application. But the only difference is right now, I can't step in and ask all the questions on your behalf that I could once I feel an agreement is finalized.
The only thing I would say is we got, you know, we got on Thursday morning, Wednesday night, we got 2,800 pages of documents to be ready to read and discuss on Monday. I mean, this is 16. I, I think we can read it in, in a couple of days and, and then come ask questions. I mean, I think it's fair if we don't have time to read it before the meeting and you need to come and ask questions, I understand that. But I think, you know, we got 28 and we had four days, we got 16 and the next two, I think we can, I think we can make that happen if it would also provide us with a sort of liaison to help give us oversight into what they're doing, so.
And I do have a quick question, then I'll get to Ms. Horn. Is there anything special or different in this contract than the state law requires? It's basically, it almost mirrors, to my understanding, the Emerald contract, correct? That we already have in place?
Yes, ma'am. It, it mirrors the Emerald contract with all of the legal updates. And then additionally, we took recent Tennessee State Charter Commission contracts that they have been doing at the state level and really, literally set them side by side and walked through them to ensure that we were not only in alignment with Emerald, but also had everything updated in accordance with the state.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was really kind of my question also, which I think Ms. Nixon answered when she first got up, was that this is, my assumption would be, but I wanted to ask that question too, is that this would be mostly state law and then also would be, would be a mirror of the charter that we have already. So between what you've, what you've said and what you've indicated, I would agree with Mr. Triplet. I think that it would be helpful if board members have questions ready on Thursday, and if we need to talk through those, we can. Because also, since you're so, since you've just talked through this, it's fresh on your minds right now, I think that's a great time to talk about it. And, and if that will help you, if it does, if it is helpful for you for us to go ahead and approve it on Thursday, it sounds like that may be more beneficial for, for our staff as far as time commitment. So, so yeah, I agree with Mr. Triplet. I would, I hope that we can discuss this on Thursday.
I agree, Ms. Horn, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this? Thank you, Ms. Nixon.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to public forum, Mr. Triplet? We have no public forums signed up. Okay, we'll move on to board forum. Celeste?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding like the invitation for you all to join, reach them to teach them in these upcoming weeks, I think it'd be a great opportunity for you all to go out and meet the students who are also working there for service hours. So for example, Beard and Key Club will be there handing out all the things, handing out the programs, and they would all love to talk to all of you. So I think it's a great opportunity for you all to go. Thank you.
That's really cool, thank you. Reverend Butler? Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Mr. Triplet? Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Well, I just want to echo what Dr. Ryswick said. This is a month of thanks, so I'm thankful for each and every one of you, I'm thankful for our staff. I look forward to being at Hardin Valley Academy tomorrow to celebrate our teachers and staff members who serve or who have served our country. And so I'm very appreciative for their service and the opportunity to celebrate them. So with that, we are adjourned.